I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Those things, let's say pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great, thank you. Avocados. Nope, avocado idiots, okay, alright. Need reports? That was.
Yeah, so at H G M S, uh, last weekend, we had the SpongeBob musical presented three times. Uh, and it will be presented three more times, uh, this following weekend. And, uh, the H G M S engineering year-long class participated in the sea perch competition and actually qualified for the international level in June in Maryland.
Very cool.
That's great.
Uh, at squadron line on March eighth, uh, the school celebrated International Social Emotional Learning Day to build skills and self and social awareness. Uh, and ten of the students participated in the Oak National Conference, which is a choir conference. Uh, so it's great that so many students got to have that experience. Uh, at S H S, we had a lot, uh, as you may know, the girls' basketball team won the C I C state championship for the Class L. Uh, the robotics team had a top-ten finish at their district event, uh, in the Innovation and Control Award. Uh, the Muawafita Honor Society had a pie run on the track, which was pie kilometers to celebrate a pie day on three-fourteen. Uh, and over three hundred students actually participated in the pie game.
Three hundred?
Yeah.
Wow.
Bet it wasn't three hundred and fourteen.
It would've been so much better if you'd really recruited.
Uh, and this Wednesday on three-twenty, we have S A T testing for juniors. Uh, and upcoming, we have the D I, D I, D E I B week, Diversity Equity Inclusion Belonging Week, uh, from April first to fifth. Uh, and the spring play will be coming up, Peter and the Star Catcher, on April twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and twenty-eighth.
Great.
Thank you.
Worth.
There you go, it's a lot of stuff.
Yeah, act, well, congrats to the girls' basketball team and also, um, congrats to the boys' hockey team, right? Semi-finals, Division One states, that was pretty cool. And then just another shout-out on a sports front, I kinda always say this to people, right? I love it when the high school kids work with the little kids. And it's like, lacrosse had their kickoff event this weekend, so the boys and girls are out there. The school team, you know, was there with the coaches, working with the kids, everyone loved it, it was a great event. So, you know, kudos to them taking their time off to do that, it's great for the community.
Absolutely.
That's great.
Just congratulations to all the sports teams that seem to be knocking out of the park. Wrestling did really well as well, um, including a state and New England champion and a freshman, Max Knopka, which was amazing. And, um, basketball and hockey, and that's all I have to say, congratulations.
Right.
Nothing to report, just, uh, again, to echo, congrats to the girls, I'm sure they'll be in here in a few weeks, so. See some of them who I coached a few years ago, it's nice.
So you're taking credit for the.
A little bit. The seniors.
A tonal call-out.
I hope them, you know, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth grade.
That's no, I'm sure they did a great job.
Oh, it'll be so nostalgic for you. Um, anyway, yeah, well, it's been, been a busy, besides sports being a busy week, was a busy week. Um, I participated in Day in the Hill with our own, uh, Sophie Luzetti, so she accompanied me and, uh, so it was a busy week, uh, busy day, I didn't know if you saw the front page of the, of the Current the other day, but we were on, got on the front page. And, um, so I, I kept Sophie busy from, from like, you know, from nine until like four o'clock that day. We had, um, several legislators that spoke with us, we did our march to the, to the L O B. We sat in a couple committees on the Ed Committee, which we found very interesting, um. Then we, um, got to meet a few, uh, other legislators, a few, um, uh, people in policy areas and a few lobbyists. So we were on the move between, between the L O B and the Capitol and in between lunch and snack, but it was great. But some of the big, uh, the big issues that are coming, as you know, will be done in, oh, god, May, beginning of May. So obviously the funding and then the support for the sm- social emotional needs and then, of course, the Ed recruitment and retention program. So, um, another area, which was new to me, was someone, um, was submitted by, um, by New London Board of Education and it's S B Senate Bill three fifty-six, an Act Concerning Compensation of Board of Edu- Education Members. And it's to remove a prohibition on the compensation of members and boards of education. As you know, by, by state statute, we are not compensated, compensated for anything or enumerated in the state of Connecticut, unlike some states, they do get stipends or, or, um, um, small compensations for, for, for what they do or enumeration or what have you. So we're not sure if this has any legs, but it's a beginning, you know, to, to, to come forward along with all the education pieces. But, um, again, they're an education committee, some of the bills are, are, are gonna be coming out of there and, um, the commissioner did speak also. The kindergarten piece was a big piece that came through, of course, the S E L and, um, you know, the Tcha and the parapay, especially the parapay was another one that came through, um, in this. So again, that's the word that we got from a lot of legislators sitting in some of these, um, these hearings was, is just exactly, again, is, you know, how much comes from the town versus the state? And that, that's the far, that's the cry you hear within the, within the, um, you know, clause of, of the L O B and the Capitol. So, um, there is a rea- mandate relief committee and there's about three hundred proposals that are supposed to be coming before this committee. Now, as you recall, this committee has not met in over a year, but yet there's three hundred proposals that are supposed to be coming before this, this committee. So, um, so at this point, um, this is where we are, it's, it's, they're gonna be, you know, getting into the other appropriations committee and other committees, but it was a good day, there were probably about seventy students from around the state that came, other, you know, V O E reps, superintendents and things, so we made our presence, you know. We made our presence known within the Capitol and the L O B so that they knew we were there and it really was a good public ed advocacy day for us, so.
Thank you.
I don't have anything at the moment.
Um, I just wanna, um, Matthew made a quick mo- mention about the perch thing and that is so cool. And, um, do you know anybody who was involved in that?
No, I don't.
But they, they do, it's robotics as well and those kids are pretty spectacular, they, they send something in the water and they grab something from the bottom and pull it up and it all has to be done by their robotics that they've designed and created and it's just a very cool program. I wish I knew more about it, but I wanna celebrate those kids for sure, cause nationally known is pretty cool and the Oak is also so special and it's, um, those kids get to, in, nationally seen by so many schools and teachers who appreciate music and teach music. So for our sports and our students, it's so exciting this time of year, I love the kickoff, cause we have so many things to celebrate and I'm always so proud of everybody. I just wanted to say that, thanks.
Thank you.
I was actually in the year-long engineering class, uh, when I was an eighth grader, but I didn't get to do the competition because of COVID. Uh, but it is a very cool competition and it's the fact that it's tasked to eighth graders, it's actually like really serious problems. You have to waterproof your whole robot and it has a cord that can't get tangled and all the obstacles. I mean, it, it's a like, it's a really serious accomplishment.
That's great.
Thanks, I, I love it.
So we're gonna continue with the celebrations, they say a picture is worth a thousand words, so I have a couple of pictures for you. Here is our DECA chapter, DECA stands for Distributive Education Clubs of America. And some of you may be familiar with F B L A or Future Business Leaders of America, which decades ago used to be more of the business end, DECA used to be more marketing. Now they've decided that it's really all-inclusive. So here we have our first DECA chapter and we've had, um, twelve students qualify to participate in national-level competition in Anaheim, California. Out of the gates in its first year, um, also some, um, chapter recognition, so we're very proud of our students through DECA. Uh, the second is that our Gertrude Banks Gospel Choir was recently asked to sing and perform at the American Choral Directors Association Conference, which is a really big deal, that happened, it happened in Providence, Rhode Island. So there are some pictures of them performing, it was an awesome day. Um, you've heard already about our Connecticut Pro Start Invitational, where our culinary students, uh, took home uh, awards around, um, their, their performance and they had to plan full-course meals, they had to have their menus checked, they had to item price. And that was just the beginning, they had to have all of their, their products inspected and then they had an hour to perform and put it all together and to be adjudicated by incredible chefs in the field. In addition, we just found out the day before yesterday that Jana Gerga, who is our culinary arts teacher, has been named the Pro Start Culinary Educator of the Year. So we're just really thrilled at how this program is taking off and I know you made the joke of home cooking. But I can assure you, there is a lot that went into that adjudication, it was just an awesome, awesome day.
Y'all, you remember the joke?
Oh, I do, I do. Uh, at the last board meeting, I also shared with you that many of our teachers participated in the Donors Choose Connecticut State Department of Education grants. So these were just a couple of fun pictures of kids using materials already that were purchased through those grants, really exciting there. And then finally, Matthew mentioned that our robotics team, uh, placed third in, um, overall and third place in the Creativity Award. So this was a picture off of the Instagram social media post for the S H S robotics team. And it, you know, it's just quite an awesome celebration of all these great things that kids are doing K-12 each and every day here in Simsbury.
Go back to the previous slide. Is, is S H S Rob- Robotics, is that a new?
Thanks for pointing that out, Lydia. I'll look, I appreciate that, didn't even pick that up until just now. I'm just gonna dance that slide, robotics. No, no, didn't even pick that one up.
I'm thinking, what a cool name.
Yeah, that's awesome.
I like that.
I've been dreaming about that tonight.
Good thing it wasn't a spelling bee. Good thing it wasn't a spelling bee. But again, it just really speaks to the incredible things that are happening within for our students every day here in Simsbury, so.
It's exciting.
I wouldn't try to follow. Amy? I, I just, congratulations to all, it was a night to hear all these celebrations and we're about to talk about the budget and there's no better way to set it up, if you ask me, so.
Just wanted to add one thing about, I mean, plenty of compliments for the girls' basketball team and they deserve it, but, um, the environment was amazing, um, for those that were there, I mean, thousands and thousands of people, it's a big-time venue. You're getting ready to, to get going and as a regular part of, before every game, somebody gets up and sings the National Anthem and all of a sudden, Charlotte, one of our players, gets up and gives you like a one percent performance of the National Anthem that the place just went.
Wow, awesome.
Crazy, and then at halftime, actually, our unified basketball team performed. So it was really a, uh, celebratory night for us.
That's great.
So.
That's great, that's a big, big time, that Hartford Court is really fun.
No, it was, it was something.
Okay.
Alright.
The first, uh, action before us is the approval of the minutes of the February twenty-first special meeting. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Moving on to the approval of the minutes of the February twenty-seventh meeting.
I'll make, I'll approve the minutes of the twenty, February twenty-seventh meeting.
Thank you, Derek, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to personnel.
Two, uh, retirements that will be happening at the end of this school year that these folks, uh, just announced. First is Paula Garza, who is a school counselor at the high school. Um, Paula is an incredibly dedicated school counselor. The, um, thing that I will remem- she writes the most beautiful letters of recommendation for kids to go to college. Um, that are, I mean, just pieces of art. Um, and, um, uh, Paula has served us for twenty years, I wanna congratulate Paula on, um, reaching that decision. And then Elaine Kotler, who is currently teaching, uh, science at Simsbury High School. Elaine has actually, um, was hired at, to teach at Henry James and has been back and forth between the high school and the middle school a few times, so has been very flexible with us during her, um, eight years of service to Simsbury Public Schools and, um, has decided that this will be her final year. So congratulations to both and the motion is there to accept their retirements.
Absolutely, congratulations to both indeed.
Great.
Um, do we have a, a motion? Let's see, read the motion.
Uh, I'll move, I move that the Board of Education accept the retirements of Elaine Kotler and Paula Garza effective June thirty, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Or, thanks. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Uh, the approval of the Simsbury Community Media Scholarship.
Yes, that's over to me, so we always appreciate any time where an individual or a group come together to propose a new scholarship. And tonight, this one is from the, our friends at the Simsbury Community Media, um, the nonprofit local TV station that is all about community engagement. So they are asking, uh, to, they are proposing one scholarship in the amount of five hundred dollars to be awarded to a graduating senior in this class of twenty twenty-four who has interest in pursuing communications, broadcast programming, audio-video, audio-video production and the like. So there is a motion there for your consideration this evening.
I'll make the motion. I move that the Board of Education approve the Simsbury Community Media Scholarship to be dispersed in twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, very generous, very nice, thank you. Uh, the approval of the educator diversity plan.
Okay, this is, um, some really important work that the Human Resources Department has been doing aligned with our strategic plan over the last few years to, um, you know, focus on our efforts to create a more diverse workforce. Uh, certainly on the certified side, but I think among all, um, certified and non-certified. This particular action tonight, um, is due to some, uh, legislation that has come through in the last few years. Um, districts have been required for a few years to have a policy about, um, at that time, it was, you had to have a minority teacher, uh, uh, minority teacher, um, educator policy. This now, it has been turned to, um, requiring an in- increasing educator diversity plan, a policy rather, that must be accompanied by a plan. And so, um, we brought the policy change in front of the Policy Committee a few weeks ago and you'll see that in an upcoming meeting. But this is actually the plan that we're gonna submit to the state. So, uh, a year ago, there was a team of six here in district led by myself and Tyia Bachelor has agreed to come out to answer any questions tonight, as well as our Director of Equity and Access. And then the other members of the team are Cindy Frelinger from Human Resources, uh, Meg Evans representing the principals, um, Katie Crisula from Special Ed, and then Vanessa Messiah, who's our Assistant Principal at Simsbury High School. We met, uh, probably half a dozen times last year over the course of the spring and developed, um, some documents that are there for, um, your review about what we were doing to, um, focus our efforts in the areas of, um, recruiting and then our hiring and retention strategies. Um, and then, um, our, I'm sorry, our hiring and selection strategies. And then ultimately, once you hire and select diverse candidates, you wanna retain them in your district. So what are you doing post-hire to make sure that people have growth opportunities and chances to stay at Simsbury? So we had done that work a year ago and no, and then knew that a plan was gonna have to be developed. What we did not know is that the state would require a certain template to be used. So the longer document that you all received was the template that the state is, uh, asking every district to use as it submits its plan. The time to submit the plan is right now, here in mid-March, so we're hoping for your approval tonight. Um, and at the suggestion of, uh, Sharon Thomas, who chairs our Policy Committee, she asked that we forward it to the Board in advance, so you actually got it in your superintendent's update a few weeks ago if you had a chance to review it then. So, um, we are very serious about the work, we're excited that the, the plan is in this stage and, um, uh, at this point, um, after your approval, we will officially submit it to the state. And then there's a two-month period where we are, it will actually be reviewed and we will get feedback from the, the group that is reviewing these plans and have a little bit of time to make any revisions to our plan to, uh, meet, to, um, answer their feedback. So very thorough process, um, wanna thank, uh, Dr. Bachelor and the others who served on the district group and, uh, the two of us are happy to answer any questions.
Neil, with the, if we get feedback and come, does it have to come back to the Board after that or?
It does not need to come back to the Board at that point.
Okay.
Um, this is, they, they want you to have a formal.
Plan, yeah.
Board vote on the plan, because it, it won't be an annual vote for the plan, it'll be one vote.
Do we have any, well, I guess it's probably too soon, I was gonna say, do we have any insight into what some of that feedback maybe?
Tyia has more than I.
You wanna, she, she should have a mic.
So they are working with West Ed?
Matthew's mic, yeah. She can pick it up.
So they did supply a rubric and the rubric, um, was in, um, was through their, um, conversations with West Ed. And as you know, we are working with West Ed for a middle and high school on some projects. So we did have an opportunity to have some conversations, um, about what were some of the things that they were looking for and, um, how it matches also with the plan that Maribel has for the state.
Any questions, anybody?
It's a lot of same stuff we've talked about, it's just in a different format primarily.
It, it, the, um, we've certainly talked about this topic, a lot, I think, I think these documents represent a more formal capturing of our thoughts uh, than we've ever really had before. So the process that we went through last spring was professional development for the six of us to kind of work through the steps of a plan. We were kind of pretty happy where we were, but the timing was terrible in that they, you finished your plan and recruiting season was basically over. And so we were coming to revisit it and that's when the state issued this template. It caused us to get our team back together again and, um, we'll be with, uh, the, a team of recruiters tomorrow, including some of our educators of color here in Simsbury at the UConn Recruiting Fair bright and early tomorrow morning. So, you know, we're gonna put this into action tomorrow morning and, and continuing after that.
So I was gonna wait and just, has it, make sure everybody's had a chance to read it and then I can ask some questions since Dr. Bachelor is here. Um, so one of the bigger questions is if the state comes back in May and says, this is fine, are we set up and ready to operate and execute on this? Because there's a number of things in here that talk about data and metrics and I just wanna make sure that we're, we have that ready to go.
Yeah, so for example, when you look at our data for intentions and hires, we have data that shows that right now for certified staff and hires, we're at eleven point eight percent. Um, our highest number in twenty eighteen, we had two hires of color and, and two thousand and one five and of those five, which I was one of the five, um, we retained, um, three people and then we added three and three twenty-two. Our numbers for non-certified are even higher, we are at eighteen point, point five percent. Um, and twenty eighteen, four people were hired, four people of color and then we moved to three in twenty twenty-one. Um, ten last year and ten twenty twenty-two. So i- if you read through it, you'll see that what we're really focusing on is retention. Um, so some of the other districts focus on how to retain the staff by looking at, um, K scales, by looking at conditions. We also look at their sense of belonging that leads back to our, our strategic, um, operating model and we believe that retention is the best strategy for recruitment. Um, so that is our main focus, you see that, so the examples aren't that varied. Um, we also take into consideration how many positions they are available. So while we have less new hires in certified, we also know that we have less openings or less step openings in certified than we do in certified. Um, the other thing we took all of that is, um, the Employee Resource Group, we currently have one, the Bi-Pocketed Group. Um, so again, changing that to ensure that as we receive new people that are diverse, that we're open to new positions, like imagine people who are black and brown, all different types of diversity. So that's why you see that is one of the changes or the shifts over the last two years, looking at just bi-pocket to the Employee Resource Group. And I'm actually presenting to ASPA, um, next month, um, our lit group, which stands for Legitimate Intentional Intonations. Making sure that as we add new affinity groups into spaces, that we're making sure that they're aligned with our goals.
And, and I, just for the folks who are listening, um, or who may be watching later, when we talk about, um, the resource groups, anyone can join those. Um, just because it says bi-pocket, you know, we wanna just make sure that it's open to anyone, right?
Right, and so the idea with employee resource groups is to make sure that everyone has a sense of belonging and that they can thrive in, in our spaces. So the idea for employee resource group is to offer that to any group that is looking for support or looking to increase their sense of belonging. So currently, we have one group, um, but we're open to having others and that's what we're making known.
Okay, I think I'm, I'm okay, I just was really, you know, cause I think a lot, you know, I think we all feel like there was a lot put into this. It's just that, you know, if they say go, can we do?
We're in the process of many of those, so we're just gonna extend it and make sure that we can sustain it over time.
And Tyia, go ahead, sorry.
And then the other part of that is saying the data will be available, so at any point if somebody were to audit and question, we should have it.
So like, for instance, the data that I shared now, um, one of the things that, that we are also looking at is different ways to collect that in terms of the different types of diversity. When we say diversity, um, we're looking for diversity of, of all different people. One of the areas that we're looking for di- diversity is in males, um, male teachers. Um, so some of the information, the way that the state is, is asking us to collect data, we wouldn't necessarily know, um, what makes a person diverse or not diverse. So that's part of the plan, to find ways to collect that information, to celebrate, um, the people that we have here. So we're doing that through our new hires and making sure that we are doing, um, state interviews, check-ins and allowing people to, to tell us what makes them diverse, so we're not putting diversity into just one category. So looking at intersectionality in all ways that can support our student body, by having representation in all ways of diversity.
And, and I would just say in terms of timing and tying this out, as we go into a reboot of our strategic plan work and priorities that the Board wants to see, it'll be very timely for us to think about initiatives we have, key work we have going on and how it ties into that plan from a data and accountability standpoint, too. So I think this dovetails, will dovetail very nicely with that. Thank you, Ty.
I was just gonna also say, we are one piece of a puzzle that needs to be solved at the state level in terms of increasing diversity of educators. It's, when you look at statewide, the percentages of, uh, educators of, of color, it's pretty low. And, um, that is something that the university programs that are preparing the next generation of teachers have committed to changing. And, um, the first fair of the year, I had a, um, a budget meeting conflict, actually, but Sidney Frelinger went to represent us, I could immediately see a more diverse set of candidates. So there was sort of like a good feeling of like, well, maybe the universities are finally catching up on this and, you know, we'll see more tomorrow. We have several recruiting fairs coming up, incl- tomorrow at UConn, Central Connecticut coming up, um, University of Hartford. And we also have, um, correct sponsors, a specific minority teacher recruiting fair that we've always attended and will con- continue to attend, so, um, we're excited about the work.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Uh, as, as Neil mentioned, we do need a, a motion and a vote on this, can somebody read the motion for us?
Move that the Board of Education approve the Increasing Educator Diversity Plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now, we are on to the budget.
Yes, alright, so I, um, our goal tonight is to adopt a new budget number and I just kinda wanted to revisit and frame out where we are in the. So I, our goal tonight is to adopt a new budget number and I just kind of wanted to revisit and frame out where we are in the process. So on March the second, I had an opportunity, I know many of you, if not all of you, were present, to present the Board of Ed approved operating budget to the Board of Finance. It was a four point nine seven percent increase. So I thought at the meeting, there were good questions, good conversation. We certainly recognize and I think understand the challenges that everybody is faced with in terms of priorities that we have identified. And the challenge with the zero grand list projected growth and what both the budget percentage of the town at four nine seven, or, or rather, the Board of Ed at four nine seven. And the town budget at that time presented. So at that meeting, it was requested that we relook at our budget. The target number of a four point three percent increase was put out there with the caveat that please do the best you can in relooking at this. I know that the town side has relooked at their budget as well. So tonight, what we wanted to do were, were two things. We have two slides to go through. The first piece of the puzzle would be to add, provide a little more specifics to the reallocation strategy that was in that four point nine seven percent budget already that was approved by the board. The second piece will be a demonstration of how we can reduce that four nine seven. I have a recommendation to a, a four point four, but it's certainly open for, for any conversation. I'll walk you through what those recommendations are and then we can answer any questions that you have. Neil is going to take the first slide and talk about what's in that four point nine seven. My suggestion would be, hold until he gets through and then we'll go back and, and spend time on clarifying that slide. And then kind of repeat the, the pattern, open it for discussion. But at the end of the day, the board's kind of goal here is to push another new number back to the Board of Finance. I believe they meet tomorrow. So we would communicate tomorrow morning, kind of the net result of, of where we landed as a board. All right?
All right, so as Matt said, this is the set of decisions that we had made in order to get from where we were at the workshop in early February. To the four point nine seven, that was the superintendent's recommendation and, and to put the specificity out there. So the first chunk of that is not personnel. This was the use of some of the dollars that Amy had spoken of as our self-insurance fund. And where we were in terms of being in a favorable position there. And utilizing a, a little bit over six hundred thousand dollars worth of dollars to more effectively answer, answer some of the operating challenges. So that was a fairly big chunk of, of with, you know, an approximately eighty million dollar budget. That every one percentage point of change represents about eight hundred thousand dollars to kind of make the math work. So that, that is the one on here that does not involve personnel and the rest do, so I'll go through them. The first is a, a change, we, we asked for several, as you know, special education positions in the budget. That were needed due to increases in program enrollment in special ed. We were able to find some flexibility in our IDA, IDEA grant, federal grant. That would allow us to take, you know, the equivalent of one of those new positions and fund it out of IDEA grant dollars instead of operating budget dollars. So that one is really just kind of where we're paying for that position from. But given that we had that flexibility and taking the pressure off the operating fund, that one was a fairly easy decision to make. The, the next one, you will recall, this is utilizing a current vacancy and reallocating a position. We, we had a lot of discussion about some reading positions that had been requested by principals in our budget. We had a retirement in reading at Henry James that will be happening at the end of this year. And feel that we've reallocated a position such that we can meet the needs that the principals and that others were bringing forward. Through a, a rehire in that position, that position will look a little different, but it's really filling a retirement rather than hiring new. And so it's reallocating a position there at Henry James in particular. The next one on the list is, refers to enrollment analysis at SHS. This is an annual task I do with the Assistant Principal Ken Para where just as your budget is coming to be approved, students are signing up for courses. And so the timing of that is always signing up for courses for next year. So we have a little bit of time to look at that initial enrollment and say, is there anywhere that we can find savings? And with this year's, and that's a department by department analysis, literally looking at the signups, we're starting in English, we're moving to math. And we were able to find savings within the social studies department of a full teacher this year. And there are retirements in social studies. So again, this is nobody losing a job, it's not replacing a retirement. And that's always a strategy we try to utilize. But that does represent a posi- a full, I mean, it's basically a retiree position that you're not replacing. The move from three point oh department supervisors in special ed pre-K through six, from four. This is looking at, we, we know we need to add in the budget, an ILN coordinator position. That's another leadership position that we've talked about in this budget. We currently have supervised three elementary supervisors plus a pre-K supervisor. And when we started to look at that, we talked with Katie Crisula and others and said, is there a way we can restructure a little bit? To not add an ILN position and leave all the rest of it intact? And we believe we have a good plan moving forward to be able to change the focus of some of those positions. And take those four positions of the three elementary and the pre-K and condense them down to three. The pre-K is actually planning right now to be spread out to two schools next year, not universally at squadron line. But there probably will be some classes, there will be some classes at Latimer, that is our plan. And then taking the burden of, not the burden, but the supervision responsibilities of the ILN program and putting that coordinator in place. This is really, it's just a reallocation and not an add, is how I would put it. The person that I spoke about who will be filling the retirement at Henry James is one of our elementary language consultants. We have six language arts consultants at the elementary level. If this person transfers to Henry James, we would simply not replace him. We would do five across the district and have Betsy Gonzalez take a look at what those assignments looked at. As with most of these, our strategy has been, and we said it to you when we needed to get to this number, we look at non-classroom positions first. And these two at the bottom are important positions, but they are non-classroom positions. So when you start to look for savings, that's really where you need to look. The transition specialist for secondary schools is an individual who organizes, runs some of our meetings around the interventions at both Henry James and Simsbury High School. It's work that is important work, but again, it's non, it's non-classroom, it's not student facing. And so what we are gonna do is parse out some of those responsibilities to other folks who are involved with the intervention teams. Some of the school counselors, some of the administrators. And believe this is a position where we, we can work a little differently and still be okay. And then the last one is a technology resource teacher. This is mostly at the elementary level. This is an individual who works more directly supporting teachers' needs with technology, certainly is in visiting classrooms and doing things. But this is more of a teacher resource than it is directly a student resource. Person again, does important work, but when you have to look at non-classroom positions, it's one that we believe was one we needed to get, to get to that kind of number. Those, these were the kind of positions we needed to look at. So that's a, you know, that was just the first part of getting to four point nine seven. But I'm happy to pause there if you want to take any questions.
Good, okay. Appreciate it, Neil. And wanted to make sure Neil went through the specifics of that because I think it gives context to where we went next, right? As a result of trying to offset the requests and priorities that were personnel with personnel. When the team looked at this next level of reductions and where we would go, we tried to keep it away from personnel to the extent we could. So the first few reductions you'll see are straight operating line item reductions after a second look at things. So I'll walk through those. The first line item is our textbooks account. So to give a little background on the textbook account, it's a, it's a current year, a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar account across the schools. We were requesting an increase of about ten thousand dollars to a hundred and seventy-eight. So the kind of assessment and the analysis of this is, can we hold that flat for the year? All right, so that yields not a huge reduction, but it moves the needle of a little bit of ten thousand. The impact of that is really the classroom libraries that we talk about, kind of refreshing those on an annual basis. We'll have a little bit more worn books for a year in terms of, of looking at the overall kind of impact of where things are. And we'll have to think about that replacement cycle as we, as we move forward. The second line item from the budget, again, from kind of that instructional category we looked at, library and media books and supplies. Overall, this is, is kind of a shared line item across the seven schools again. It's about a hundred thousand dollar line item in totality. It includes direct purchases to our library and media centers on damaged materials, new materials. There's audio visual in there, there are subscriptions. So of the hundred, about fifty of it represents dollars where we purchased books. So we would just hold on new purchases of books for a year is basi- is, is basically what we're looking at there.
When's the last time we did that? I shouldn't interrupt, sorry, keep going.
I don't, not, not in my tenure, we haven't done that. So not in at least twelve years. So of a hundred thousand dollar line item, we'd take half of it. And we, we'd move through it that way. The third line item, a bit of a, a bigger chunk. So it's interesting, I want to give you some historical information on this. This goes back several years when they kind of reconstituted open choice funding. At the same time, we increased our number of students. So this probably goes back, I want to say, seven or eight years. We received an additional four hundred thousand dollars in the grant funding at that time. So we were in a difficult budget season during that time. We looked at the best way to kind of utilize those dollars in the grant. We didn't want to earmark them for personnel in case we had to come back and create a cliff. So we actually earmarked every year in the open choice grant. And when you go to that page in the budget book, you see a four hundred thousand dollars for equipment. Represent, this, this is kind of an encompassing line item of desks, chairs, cafeteria tables. And then the technology side, district level laptops, panels, things that we have replacement plans for. So historically, equipment is a zero baseline, budget line item for us. The requests always outnumber the dollars that we fund. We look at it and prioritize on an annual basis where we, where we land. So what we would do in this proposal is we would reduce the equipment purchases by two hundred thousand dollars. So we'd still be able to get high priority things to the building. We'd reduce the overall amount and we would create flexibility on that grant. So much like Neil talked about in the other position, we will look with Amy on what would be the most strategic areas to place two hundred thousand dollars back on that grant. To offset the operating costs and create minimal cliffs possible. So it's a, a unique way and I think a strategic way, years ago, we utilized the grant to allow us flexibility when we did need it. And we're kind of cashing that chip, chip in now or that strategy in now. Again, it's, it's a challenge. We know we have aging things, but it's a way that we can prioritize, hit the top priorities for schools and come back to it. Another important factor in analyzing this is the Latimer Lane project and the dollars committed to the FFNE in terms of brand new technology, brand new furniture with that renovation. We're gonna have an opportunity to really look at all of that stuff coming out of Latimer. How does that weigh against other schools' priorities in terms of tables, desks, chairs? So there's a whole process there where we'll be able to utilize things that are still in reasonable shape from Latimer to kind of offset priorities that principals have. So it really moves the needle on the number, which I think is helpful and it keeps it, it keeps it away from personnel and, and program. The next piece is instructional supplies. This is often an area that gets analyzed by boards of education and superintendents when they're asked to relook at their budgets and look for reductions. It's a pretty encompassing and large line item for us. It's eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar line item request going into next year in the operating budget. It is inclusive of like our copier lease contract and, and many different things. It's an increase, what we currently have in the budget presentation is an increase of fifty-four thousand dollars over the prior year. So we would look to reduce that ask by eighty thousand dollars. So fifty-four brings you back to flat. We go a little bit deeper in terms of analyzing needs. One of the things we're looking at very hard right now in our negotiation on the copier lease is in a way to increase the usage of the copiers. Get away from toner and smaller printers, which costs a fortune. And we think we've seen some good savings we'll be able to realize there that won't make this reduction as, as painful as maybe initially, initially thought. The next item is when we kind of get into positions a little bit. So item five is the point two strings teacher. Now that was an ask in the new personnel asks that the, that the board supported. So it was essentially what that is, is we have a longstanding point eight position in strings that's shared between squadron line and Terrifield School. The individual that had, has had that position for many years is leaving the organization. We were looking to make it whole from a flexibility standpoint because it was only a, a point two, it was a smaller investment. And at this time, we would just fill it the way it is and we would monitor that over time. So it, it's basically program as is, it's not a step backwards from program as is, but it doesn't get them that additional flexibility. You know, lesson groups will be larger and, and some things there. I think it's a need we have to address in the future, but in terms of prioritizing right now, it's one we feel we can, you know, we can be okay without. The last item on the list that we have, which would bring the overall budget to a four point four one increase, pretty close to that four point four, or that four point three. Is we have, I'm not sure to the exact number, Neil, you can correct me, somewhere between a hundred and ten to a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and ten elementary sections. Neil monitors the enrollment in these sections on a weekly basis. We have a couple of sections across schools that we're looking at now, that we have sections budgeted for, that classes are well under the guideline. And if we were to staff today, we could actually do with one less of a position in the district and still be within the guideline, at the high end of the guideline. So our request would be, we would not post for that position right away, eliminate it from the operating budget. We would monitor that throughout the higher, you know, throughout the season and enrollment season. And if we got in a situation where that really looked problematic, we would come back to the board and discuss that. It's something we do on an annual basis in terms of, you know, a section being added, a section being reduced over the summer. But in terms of where we stand right now, rather than go into new requests that we've advocated for in the budget. We think this one makes sense, which brings the recommended reductions to a little over four hundred and sixty-one thousand or four point four one. Now I'll just say that, you know, a lot of thought and analysis went into going beyond this number with our team. I chose not to put those positions on the list, but essentially what we would be doing is digging back into the requests we approved in the budget. So any movement beyond here, I feel like really starts to impact caseloads in special ed, impact program in a, in a negative way. The areas we did look at and discuss were the additional special ed teacher at the high school. And then maybe an additional reduction of a counselor at the high school. Both would have adverse impacts, I feel, and are a deeper dive into impact to the district than what I've presented here. So we made this election in terms of, uh, a number that we felt, um, we could be a little more confident in to, to move it forward to you at, at four point four-one for discussion.
Great, um, let me just take chair's prerogative here for a second and just, uh, echo what Matt said earlier about the presentation. I, I want to, um, thank our colleagues over at the Board of Finance. It was a good meeting, uh, Matt and Amy did a great job. Um, you know, it's, it's a tough meeting, it's a, it's a tough conversation. We have diametrically different interests in that presentation. Um, but they appreciated and I think recognized the work we're doing. Uh, more than one stated that this budget, even as presented at four-nine-seven, was a very appropriate budget. But they're under, um, constrictions and limitations, and they felt that we obviously had to come back uh, and, and get lower. But I just wanted to make sure we said that and, and stated it, because in years past, let's be honest, it's been a very contentious conversation. Uh, and this was, this really was kind of anything but, so I just wanted to state my appreciation.
Jeff, I would, I would add this one, uh, piece as well. I know on the Board of Selectmen, look at the budget, um, they were able to get to the mark that the Board of Finance hoped they would get to, and even get beyond that mark a little bit. So I can say that in totality, and Amy, correct me if I'm wrong, in terms of the guidance that was given at that meeting in the Board of Finance about the end game, inclusive of both boards, we're within that, we're within that area financially, so. Little more for them, little less for us, kind of got us there in, in totality.
Yeah.
So we appreciate you.
We appreciate you.
Hopefully giving us some flexibility.
Thank you.
Thank you. A- a- any comments, questions?
I, I have a question about the point-two string teacher, strings teacher. What, I mean, it's twenty thousand dollars, so if that was added back in, what does that do to the percentage? What does it take the four point four-one to? Four point?
Four point four-four.
So, still a substantial cut from the four-nine-seven, a nominal increase percentage-wise, but we get a full strings teacher between two schools who would help reduce the lesson size, is that right?
That's my understanding, yeah.
And be able to accommodate other programming.
So if you're a strings teacher at the elementary level, you have the larger orchestras just like once a week? Most of your work is in lessons with the cellos, lessons with the violins, so that's sort of, and, you know, you end up with slightly larger groups that you have to put in, put together.
What's the percentage of students that take strings?
Oh, boy.
I haven't looked at that, Tara, but I certainly can.
It, and it's well over half. Is it around half?
They introduce strings in the fourth grade, which is before the instrumental. So you see a bump initially in that grade four, and then you see some leveling out when they have more choices in fifth and sixth grade. But I can certainly look at a percentage for you.
Question a little differently, what is that? Point, the point-two doesn't get you another person or anything, so I don't think it's doing anything to group sizes, is it just?
It would make this position that has long been a part-time position a full-time position. So this was a decision to say, given a tough budget, we're just, for now, gonna leave it part-time.
Right, no, and I'm, I'm, I'm good with that. I guess what I'm saying is, whether it's point-eight or point, or full, it's not, I don't think it's, it doesn't sound like it's gonna affect group sizes or, or any, the, the sort of the instruction piece of it.
If you're a point-eight teacher, you work eighty percent of the day, so you probably go home at one-thirty as opposed to two-fifty, you know, something like that.
Stretch it out a little bit more.
Be able to get two more lesson groups in, something like that.
Is anybody being waitlisted? Like, does everyone get in who wants to get in, the groups are just bigger?
The strings, yeah.
And for the person, what, full-time versus part-time, I know what that usually means. For teachers, is there, what's the difference between point-two, like salary?
So, for, it's eighty percent.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, I see the number. Is there anything benefits or anything like that? Does this person, point-eight versus full-time, still get benefits, get everything, so?
They stay, if you're over point-five, you are eligible for benefits.
So really just a straight twenty thousand dollars added to the budget?
Salary.
Yeah. I mean, it was, it lived point-eight for a long time because the individual in it wanted point-eight.
Is our, is our enrollment in strings, is it, has it been increasing over the years? I mean, I know our music program is, is excellent, and it starts there and moves up, and our high school programs are fantastic as a result of the early work done in elementary school. And I know some surrounding districts start even earlier. Like, I just learned Granby, I think, starts in second grade, maybe Windsor starts in second grade, um, which I think is fantastic, and music is such an important part of our kids' education, and helps them with math and everything. And now I lost my train of thought.
If we're having more students enter into strings?
They all, they all dipped during COVID. Cause that was a rough time, actually not as much for strings. The horns, the wind instruments, you literally couldn't blow into your instrument. You had to, like, it was not allowed, it got, so that really took a dive and has made a bit of a recovery. These, um, particular, the strings numbers took a little bit of a dip. They're certainly recovering. Um, but again, this is one where you're, you know, it was a, for me in this budget, it was always, that's a nice to have, and we're not gonna, we're not gonna be able to do it in the sense that, um, you know, you have to start making decisions. One of my philosophies is like, well, maybe just some of these things we wanted to add, we can't, when we have to eliminate. But I, either way, financially, it is small.
And what it does to the percentage is, is minimal. So I wonder if we go, if we allow for this in our initial, or our next pass with the Board of Finance, will they really care between four point four-one and four point four-three, or whatever the number was?
I think they will.
I think they will.
Then how much they care about four point three?
That's right.
The reduction, even though the percentage will definitely get lower.
It should be our budget, right, not theirs.
We've gotten lower, right, but we haven't hit their target, and that's not a concern. And we have a commitment from, from them that we'll revisit this next year, and we all acknowledge it's an important add, but I think the question is, is it really, kind of like Neil was just saying, do we have to have that right now this year? I'm not so sure that's the case, unfortunately.
The person leaving, when's this person leaving? Cause I'm wondering about replacing at point-eight versus one, equality candidates. So I'm curious, you know, this person leaving, we say we'll revisit. Is this person leaving where we need to go out and try and get equality candidate at point-eight?
This person has, we now hired a new point-eight, so we actually have a new point-eight in there.
So that person already agreed to come in at point-eight?
That person signed a contract to be a point-eight.
I take it the fact that you're not a table, person's desire would be to go to one if?
I, uh, eventually, sure, yes.
Yeah, I think maybe we will, or there, I would just on all of them, and I hear, you guys were quick to say on the four point four-three, um, that people will care. I've got other comments that I'll save for a little bit, but, yeah, maybe it's because we're new, but this feels like we're being asked to fundamentally do some things that feel, like we're being asked to hit a number. Like, question, just screwed out there, cause I've got comments on all these. Um, who do we want to be, what's our goal? Four-three is a number. Everything we started this meeting with is how proud we are of this town, our accomplishments. And you kind of, in any business or any entity, you don't know when you've started to go the wrong way. I'm not saying we are, but those things we showed on those slides that we saw about all the things we're doing, you know, when you start saying, okay, our, our strings, it's, it's only twenty thousand, it's only point-o-two. But how many kids, like, you know what, don't really get a good vibe from it, cause the class is just so big, right? Or don't sign up, cause they've heard other kids say like, yeah, it's kind of like, you know. I'm not saying this is the thing, this is the hill, but all these things feel like, and we'll get to them, right? Like, not even replacing books in our library, not being a district that can have a full-time strings teacher. Is that really what people in Simsberry want? I mean, I would, I would question that, right? So yeah, four, I'm with Jeff, they gave us a number, and I just put it out there. Is that number what Simsberry wants? Cause Simsberry wants all the stuff we saw, right? They wanna be nationally recognized, we wanna be the best at this, we wanna have great, we wanna have great musical, we wanna have great sports. And where do you turn that corner and say, yeah, we've got things to face, but is this really how we want to face it, right? There's the grand list, there's the mill, right, there's all of that, not ignoring all of it. But it's just, at what point are you not who you want to be? And who decides that? I guess, that's just my overall, because some of these feel like, is this really who we want to be? And I don't know the answer, but I think people need to be able to weigh in.
Just one other question on the strings front. If this was a full-time position, presumably that would allow for more flexibility in scheduling the lessons during, throughout the day? Cause, so I have kids who've gone through the strings program at, at the elementary level, and now, and even when my son is about fifteen, did it, he would get pulled out of science for reading, you know, or math or whatever, because of the way it was scheduled, and presumably because there's a short period of time to get in all of those lessons. So I'm wondering if adding the point-two might help lessen the chances he's missing, or she's missing math, you know, every week, at least one lesson a week. Um, and maybe that comes in a different time, because there's more flexibility in timing.
I think that's hard to say. Our elementary schedule is pretty jam-packed. We get a lot done in the time that we have, so lessons are predicated at the student is going to have to go to that strings lesson and miss something that's happening in the classroom. So it might impact, but I don't want to say if we don't add, then it will definitively either create more stress or not.
Again, and I would just remind it, this is not a reduc-, it's, it's a reduction in the sense of, of that dollar, but the point-eight is where we're at today, so, I mean, let's, let's be clear, there's, 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 I would, I'm not sure it would create stresses.
But it was an ask for a reason, right?
Absolutely, don't get me wrong, absolutely.
That, that would be my, right? There was only a couple point-eights to point, there was only two in the whole thing, right? That the whole district came and said, hey, this is part-time, can we make it full-time? And I assume that's for a very good reason, so yeah, that is where we are, but.
And the other one was a high school position that panned out in that analysis I was talking before. Like, you looked at the numbers there and you said, yeah, that has to be full-time, or we're gonna be cutting kids out of the program. So the other ask did make it in, you know?
Anybody, anything else? I mean, these are the, I mean, these, no one's, no one's, no one's, everyone's recognizing the need, it's, these are the tough, these are the tough choices.
I have another question on the equipment grant. So we're taking two hundred thousand dollars from what we would like to spend on equipment, and moving that out into the, we're just taking that out completely?
Right, so, the way equipment works on an annual basis is it's part of that initial process that goes out to building principals, goes out to, you know, maintenance, all those different areas. And it's a prioritized list that comes back to us in these equipment areas. We total it up, and we always allot that four hundred in the grant towards it. Even if there's, like, Amy, those requests are normally beyond that number, well beyond that number. It's kind of like the CNR challenge that we have. Um, and we sometimes don't allot all the four hundred, and we have some of that grant flexibility to use in other ways. But we're saying we would make the conscious decision to only fund two hundred thousand in equipment. It would free up the capacity in that grant to slide some other things from operating onto that two hundred.
So what, I guess that's where my question lies. What is the two hundred funding? Is it funding part of a new position that we're gonna, gonna, gonna have trouble funding next year? Because, or are we gonna continue to take the two hundred from it to fund it? What are you planning on?
I, I think we have to relook at that next year and have a real conversation on what those equipment needs are. We haven't made the final decision of if we slide two positions over, or if we utilize other line items to, to offset. That's something we'll work through as we kind of go through the process. But it's definitely gotta be rea-, a revisit in the future, otherwise you've altered your me-, you, you know, your funding mechanism for equipment, you know, moving forward, so. But it's an area where you kind of make the decision. Um, you do less in these certain areas and try to prioritize differently for, for a year, and then you give it a hard relook at next year.
I should have started my comments with, I really appreciate all the work you guys have done to get us here. Because I know, I was at the Board of Finance meeting, and I walked out feeling very deflated and frustrated that we had to cut more. Um, so I appreciate what you've done to get us here in a way that doesn't impact students as much as it could have, so thank you for that.
Yeah, especially the first slide, right? I mean, all that was done to get us to the four-nine-seven.
Yeah, I, I, we, we thought that was important to kind of denote, because, you know, in a process, when you move from one number to the next, and then, you know, as the presentations move forward, people are just kind of focused on the number that's presented. So I think it is important to note that there's gonna be some changes in practice, just to get to that four-nine-seven, which is, I think, your point.
Very real stresses.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, even that tech support one, right? Yeah, that, that just goes right to, it's a teacher assistant, but, I mean, we've all been there, right?
Yeah.
The longer you're on with tech support, the longer you're on, right? I mean, that's less time.
And every kid has a computer.
Yeah, that's, that's less time you're working with a student, that's less time you may be writing to a parent, that's less time you have to plan a lesson, right? It's, it's taken away, it's an indirect, and again, I get that, but it's still an impact on our students. And I, and I agree with Jessica, I appreciate everything that's going on. I think it's our job then to kind of say, we were given an assignment, also, you were given an assignment, we have to bring it to us. Um, but I feel like our charge on this board is just saying, okay, what's reasonable and what's to say. I think the comment was made at Board of Finance, something about like, when do we hit bone? And I guess that's really what else is like, that's saying is like, when, when you hit bone, you may not know until you hit bone, right? Like, you must, and some of this stuff, like I said, doesn't sit great with me, and I respect and kind of look around the room, reading in the room. It's one of the things I think we've all, they've definitely all been here more than us, but back here, you've seen where this probably goes, and maybe we don't have that knowledge yet. But when I see things like what we already did, and then, one that sits with me is the instructional supplies. There's not a single person around that will tell you cost hasn't gone up for everything in society. And that's why, part of the reason why we are where we are. And then we're gonna try and have our instructional supply budget go down and say we're still Simster, right? We're not gonna replace any of the books in our media center, we're still Simsberry, right? We're gonna have no new classroom libraries, cause we're gonna cut back our textbooks. At what point, again, I'm repeating myself because it's just no line anymore, what point did we hit bone in now, right? Like, to me, not being able to have our media centers get new books for a whole year, which sounds somewhat unprecedented, at least in the past decade plus, feels like there's some bone in there, right? Like, so, again, I appreciate where we are, and I think four-three is a goal. I think it's our job to say, is four-four where we come back? Or, or is there some things in here that we just aren't comfortable with, and maybe the number's four-four-five? Or four-four-eight, and what does that mean? I don't know what comes next, but, um, I just want to make sure whatever we're doing here, and I know we all know this, is in the best interest of our students and teachers.
I have another question.
No, go ahead, you finished, go ahead.
Okay, I'll be very quick. On the textbooks, so if we cut half the budget for the textbooks, uh, I'm sorry, the library supplies, if we cut half that budget to fifty, um, will they, the library still be able to buy, like, the new Calde, whatever that award is, like, you know, the
Eldeka.
Caldecott award, but will, will we still get, have money to buy at least some of those?
Yeah, I think.
Award-winning books that become in part of what our kids want to learn, or is that just totally out?
No, I wouldn't say that that's totally out at all. As Matt shared, that's a pretty, um, well-substantiated line item. And so that is not just books, but other equipment as well. So there's still going to be discretion among our library media specialists to look at some of those award winners and put those, um, you know, the nutmeg books or the Caldecott awards in, in kids' hands, but maybe not. But maybe not the extent of adding to our inventory as we would have in previous years.
So.
Beyond those.
So just to interject on that, just to make sure that I'm reading this right. So we're saying we're gonna reduce, like currently, so the numbers, um, the budget amount was a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, okay? Last year it was one seventy-eight, so.
You're saying keep it flat.
Right, that's all we're doing is keeping it flat.
Okay.
That's what I tried to get on.
Textbooks, right. That's what I'm, yeah.
So that's just a ten thousand dollar.
I'm talking about the library, the drop of fifty, I said the budget was a hundred and we're dropping it to fifty.
So. Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, not textbooks, the library.
So, so to go back to what Matt is saying, just so you, to give you numbers, it's, um, a hundred, I mean, for the library, it was a hundred thousand dollars. That's library, media and books, right?
Yeah.
A hundred thousand was last year. This year they were asking a hundred and three, okay? So they were just increasing it.
But that, that's a bigger, that's a bigger.
That's a drop.
And so what he's doing is dropping it fifty.
Yeah, that's, it's a change of practice.
Yeah, that's, that's the one I'm talking about, not textbooks.
But for, but you said for a year, right? You just said for this year?
Yeah, we'll have to revisit, yeah.
Right, we'll revisit next year.
Considering, and this is gonna show my age probably more than anything. It, it's considering it's, it's twenty twenty-four. And we keep referring to that line item as reduction in books. How many books are we really buying? Are we still buying a lot of books, or is there?
You know, we, we, we are, I mean, well.
Internet or like electronic media or something, something else?
Not that fifty thousand dollar number.
It's, it's a, it's a compilation of different kinds of things that we'll have to reassess. But we are still purchasing paper books and kids still, even in the high school, um, and in the middle school, come and check out books and, um, peruse and certainly all of those components. But it still provides some level of flexibility, just not what we would have in a typical year.
And I think the challenge is getting articulated in multiple different ways, but it's the same one, right? In, in times like this, there really aren't that many places to go outside of people in our organization. So, you, you know, I, I'll say it was a cognizant effort after what we had did, done to get to four nine seven, to, um, try to stay away from that to a certain extent, but I can't disagree with any of your points. You know, none of this is, uh, you know, we don't sit down and be like, oh, this is a great idea. You know what I mean? It's, it's kind of the, the, the level of analysis of, you know, with the task at hand, as you said, the assignment, right? And at the end of the day, the ultimate call on the fiscal number that gets granted is theirs. Um, it's not ours. And it's, it's a matter of, you, you know, how we advocate, how we present and what those, um, different challenges, um, different challenges are.
I think.
I appreciate everybody's perspective on it, I do.
I think what this is showing is that there's just, I mean, to related to like politics or whatever, there's not any pork in this bill, you know? It is.
Right.
Right.
And I'll say the other, and I'm not trying to be doomsday at all, the, the other challenge, and Amy and I talk about this a lot, right? Amy, when, when you're looking at operating line items and knowing there are not a substantial number, we've juggled the deficit as a result of some of the special ed challenges that we've had. So when you do reduce other operating areas, you reduce your ability to respond to those areas and occur here, right? So part of what you do in any deficit year is you take a look at these buckets. What expenditures have not been spent? What dollars can we hold a little bit to put towards a deficit to try to lessen the impact there? So, um, you know, it's a comp, it's a complex soup, it really is.
Well, they're all good comments, but this is, let's be clear, this is very uncomfortable. I don't like that at all, but it's, you know, where we're at.
But I think for being, and to give you a little bit of context and history in this, cause I've been doing this gig a long time. We've had this song and dance going over how many years and years and years we've done this. And there have been some years where we were high and low and we, again, we, your questions are very good. They're very important because they do go at the crux of what we do in this school system and who we are and what distinguishes us from someone else. But at the same, same level where we are, we don't want to, for lack of better words, we really don't wanna offend too much by saying we haven't done our due diligence by really looking at things. And, and this is what administration has done, Matt and principals and everyone, they have gone over this and over this and over this a billion times before they've even brought it forward to us and again. And as, as Matt was saying, is that the majority of the budget is personnel. As you both know, you're on that committee, so you'll find out that that's what it is. It's the salaries and the benefits that take up most of the budget. And the rest of the, of everything else is basically the second part of it. So we really do try not to hit as close to students as possible and to save what we possibly can. And Matt, you said a good point. Your last comment was, you know, by, and I'm forgetting, I wrote, didn't write it down, but what you just said two seconds ago, and of course, I forgot.
Complex soup.
Complex soup, exactly. Exactly, this is exactly what it is. But what you said was is that, you know, you try not to cut at this because it does affect everything else. And especially in terms of the special ed. You know, anything you cut in here still is going to affect the special ed, special ed items. So this is kinda where we are. I mean, if all things were equal, we throw everything back into the complex soup from A to Z and make it a big bowl of A B C soup. But right now, we're doing chalene broth.
Comments, questions?
Um, so, you know, I'm just gonna give a generalization. I, you know, again, I appreciate everything that's been done as well. Um, you know, I've talked to Matt, you know, we've had some discussions about some of the things as well. And, um, and I know it's difficult, but I also know, um, we were here last year. We're back here again this year and next year, we're gonna be there again. So, um, at some point, we're gonna have to look at this and I'm gonna put my business hat on and say, you know, I understand that we're in a community in which we have a great school. People move here because it's a great school, all right? Um, but I also look at it and say, you know, we have a number of families that are represented, right? Because everybody living in this community doesn't have children. But those families that don't have children are also supporting this budget, okay? And yes, they stayed here because it's a great community. Um, but you know, my boss would end up saying to me, tell me what the ROI is gonna be for this, right? And you say the ROI is, we have a great school and the schools help our property values, right? But then that other resident is gonna say, well, how long is it gonna help the property values? And I can't afford to stay here. And that's where, that's where we are. And that's where we're gonna continue to be. And so at some point, I, I just gotta put this out there to say, at some point, we're gonna have to figure something out different. I, as a town, as a community, as a, a council or something. I'm not saying it's all on us, but I'm saying that from other people who are living in this community, it's getting to a point. And even it was said in finance, that people are gonna start putting up for sale signs. And we talked about the twelve dollars before. Um, we haven't gotten to what that dollar amount is gonna be when we go back to them. But, but it's gonna break some people. So.
Tough times.
Yeah, yeah.
So an answer to that, to have this conversation even more so continuing on, cause you've had these for years and years and we go this year, next year. How do we combat that? Uh, you know, it's, it's, we feel sometimes that everything is always thrown on Board of Education. You know, we are the largest budget in the piece of the pie, obviously, we are the largest employer. But how long can a Board of Education suffice under these circumstances without? I know you're sitting here, but, um, and you're new to this also. But where is the town economic development piece of this? To help offset this budget, their questions they're asking to also? That's gonna be a con, that's a conversation.
And it's hot of us, but, right.
Let's, let's, let's circle back to what we're, what we're trying to do here. I appreciate all these comments and they're all very valid, but let's try to get through this, what we're trying to do tonight first and then we can, we can return to that.
But Jeff, to that point, if I may, because I hear what Sharon's saying, I hear what it's saying, I, and I think it is probably playing, again, new and I may be misreading things, cause I've been through it. But what Sharon's saying there, I guess my ask, correct me if I'm wrong, is I hear everything that's being said. And I, and I look at this town and I look at my role on this board. And I don't know if my role on this board is to solve everything that was just mentioned. Or if my role is to try and make sure that Simsberry having great schools stays that way. Now, the, how it impacts people, we can't ignore that. What the business development is, can't ignore that. But what we can control is making sure that one part of that complex soup is that our school system doesn't slide backwards. Cause I don't think that helps anything. And I think when you start not putting new books in your library, or when you have class sizes at a brand-new school staying at twenty-two, when you don't have tech support for teachers, at some point, I do wonder if one of those things is Simsberry's top-notch school system starts to slide. And if it starts to slide, have you now just added another hurdle to getting to where this town wants to be? Or have you helped the situation, cause you have a lower budget? I know there's no right or wrong answer there, but I just know where I sit. And when I look at what Matt and his team has brought forward and they've done an excellent job and the principals have gone over it, they're being asked to say, can you live with this? And I'm here saying, should we force them to have to live with it? Or do we give them the opportunity to keep growing and getting to where we've been? Cause a lot of people do move to this town for the schools. And I think if you start having a town where we have issues, but then you say the way we're gonna solve the issues is to create another issue? And our schools are pretty much our flagship for this town? Again, maybe I'm wrong, maybe I don't have my role right. But my role is to say, what can I do to make sure that the school system stays the thing people want? And let the other areas figure out those other things and we can be part of it. Doesn't give us the right to say, we're not cutting our budget at all. The four nine seven was an honest, fair number. We didn't get into the C N R, I do have a question for that at the end. And then if we go down from four nine, get as close as we can to four three, I think it's a, I think it's beyond fair. I think we're, I think we've hit bone personally. But again, I wasn't here last year and maybe it always feels like you're hitting bone. But I don't know how sustainable that is over time either. So I just throw that all out there. Again, maybe next year I'll be sitting here and I'll have a different view of like, oh, I remember this last time, I was, but at least for this year, I'll be trying that one.
Yeah, I, I agree completely with Josh then, again, maybe because we're the newbies. But, um, my concern in some of this is, yes, so this year it's an easy, let's cut library in half, right? But then next year, when we are in this exact same situation, because we have increasing enrollment on special ed, which are higher dollars for our personnel, when we have more people, more adolescent students move to the district in the middle of the school year, so we can't even budget for them. Are we gonna say, okay, well, we're gonna have to take a hit again because that's a lot of student-facing number? Although I would argue that it ultimately is a student-facing number. And are we gonna cut that again, because it's an easy, we're not removing a teacher, we're not firing a person? And I, I do not wanna do those things either, recognizing the complexity of the situation and the dollars need to add up. But my concern about chopping these things so significantly is that then we're gonna come and do it again next year.
And, and I think everybody shares that, that, those comments, I really do. But the alternative is to cut, to, let's be clear, it's to cut personnel right now. And we've been given an assignment that, as Matt said, they have the ultimate sign-off on, right? So saying no and putting all this stuff back in is really not an option.
And I'm not, also the kind thing that we go back to the four nine and seven and say, there's nothing to do here. Um, just that we're very mindful about these things that we're doing. The job is when you went into this, cause I know how much work you put into this. Um, it just troubles me that we're gonna be in a similar situation next year. And I wonder if maybe we need to have some more pushback on the Board of Finance and say, we did our very best, but we can't get to four three, but maybe, but we can get to four point four five or four point five. I mean, that's still a dramatic reduction from the four nine seven and pretty close to them, but then maybe doesn't cut the strings teacher and maybe doesn't cut the library just as much. If next year we have to do it again and we have to drop, so maybe we take twenty-five from the library instead of fifty. So then next year, if we have to do this, that's when we take another twenty-five.
And I'll just give, this isn't a, a, a pushback, but it's a little perspective, having been through it for, for many, many years. This Board of Finance, and, and I respectfully understand what you're saying about the pushback, and the tenor of these conversations is very different than they have been in the past. In the past, if we were given that kinda cap or that guideline at one seven five, that, that's where this started. Was one seven five and we're ending at a four three. And while, while there are a host of challenges in that, I do believe everybody's trying to be as flexible as they can in terms of steering this to a direction where we, we can be su- uh, successful. I don't dispute anything that you guys have set at the table. I think, I think the new set of eyes and the questions are, are excellent. Um, but I think we, I mean, I think we're at the point now, we gotta figure out, you gotta guide the ship. Which, which one of these numbers do you guys wanna go in at as a board? And where are you comfortable for them to, to analyze, um, how we responded to the, to the request? You know, because I, um, nobody's right, nobody's wrong in these instances. It's just a real challenge we're trying to solve. Um, and that is the tension amongst the, you, you know, the three boards, right? You, you all have a different interest that you look through, uh, and, and what you're trying to do, you know? Um, you know, our, our initial everything all-in, as, as people know at the workshop, what we were comfortable with was a six nine seven. Uh, so, you know, I think we, we've done a lot, a lot of work to get here. Uh, I think, um, there are some challenges. I do think on the special education side, we are funding those challenging areas, um, of outplacement, transportation and contracted services to an accurate level, more effectively than we have in the past. I, I, I will say that. I think we've looked to cover certain of those accounts from other accounts. My hope is that we can true some of those up and really get a better handle on doing a few things different to control them. But you make a good point, Jessica, you know, to predict where that trend will go is very, very challenging. So I'm appreciative of the dialogue, I am.
Absolutely, yeah.
Absolutely. Anybody wanna kick off Matt's question or answer to Matt's question?
I know there's a motion at least in the, in the folder, I think, right? As a, as a starting point and it can go.
Or we talk about adopting or not, or whatever goes in. Can I ask you a question, like, if it's a, if it's a budget and maybe someone? I mean, I'm a B O F, where did we land there? Like, I feel like the, they were gonna like fix the bus, but that wasn't like, I thought maybe it meant they were taking the buses. But then I kinda heard after, it didn't mean they were taking them forever. So like the C N R thing, you remember a couple meetings back, I was like, I'm on this site, so.
I think Amy's got some insights into that.
Yeah, I saw what the Board of Finance said about it last week. Um, they're open to the proposal, so I think they have the final say, we don't know what's gonna happen. But, um, the proposal, I made them last Thursday, they were open to, so. What was that proposal? Um, to add a million dollars to C N R, some thousand dollars to Board of Buses. And would that, would the buses out come in please from us? So the buses would go in and we'd get.
This is back to what we originally wanted, which is we wound our C N R up and it kinda felt like, give us more C N R and we'll take care of our own buses. Then it felt like maybe the C N R was gone, but they'll fix a bus and I was kinda like, I don't want.
Which freed up a little more capacity in the C N R at least momentarily, so.
For the C N Rs, cause that to me is important, that, that may be on a separate tab of the spreadsheet. So I feel like that's very important too, cause where we go here, in addition, the C N R is in that complex soup. But, um, that's good to know, thank you.
Oh, there it is. Thank you. I move that the Board of Education adopt the revised twenty twenty-four, twenty-five public school budget in the amount of eighty-five million, eight hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and forty-six, which represents an increase of three million, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and eleven, or four point four one percent. We don't.
Tara's read it, so.
It's the last slide.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? So you're at four-four-one, just so we're all clear.
I think I would just like to say that I, I appreciate all the work that was done to try to keep this away from our students as much as possible. Um, it is lean years, it's, it's difficult, it's uncomfortable. Um, and it'd be great if we could figure out some economic development and every single person watching this should figure out a way to remove their companies here. Um, but it would be a, I just think this is the best we could do and I'm, I'm proud of us getting here. Even though it's very uncomfortable.
Yeah, I would just say, given everything we said, hearing Tara say that, hearing Brian second, hearing everyone else. Um, I think there's a point you get to where you say, set up, you respect, we've been here. Respect the people who made the budgets to get us this far. And if you're comfortable not happening, if you're comfortable with where we landed, then I respect that. Even though it still doesn't feel right, but I guess you get used to that a little bit, not a great thing, but hopefully we don't have to keep doing it. But yeah, I, discussion-wise, I'll go along. It's clearly no one else is going crazy on it, I mean.
I think all your points were really important though, and I'm glad you said everything you said. And I think um, you're thinking the way we all think, I love it.
I would say you, you said it very well. Comfortable, not particularly happy, you know, I think that sums it up really well, actually.
Excuse me, did someone say anything?
Brian, Brian. Any other discussion?
Just that I'm kind of reluctantly go along with this. Because I, I think in any negotiation, you know, we're never happy, you can just live with it. And that's sort of, if you are, as the administrator are saying, this can be lived with. And you can still do what we're supposed to do and, and take care of the kids we have and give them what they need. Um, then I will reluctantly go along with it. But I, I just want to flag something I know we've all been talking about is this is not a sustainable process. And something needs to shift fundamentally, because if we're doing this year over year over year. We're, we're already then at the tipping point frankly, where our education will eventually suffer. And that is the primary draw for people to come to this town.
Now, when you say doing this, just so I know what you're talking about, you mean the size of the budget increase? You mean the reductions off the budget increase? What do you mean?
The reductions, that, that you are not getting the budget, you guys think is necessary to fulfill the obligations that you all have. That we all have legally. Um, so many of these obligations, I understand, are not coming from us. They are legal obligations that we require to meet, from state, from, um, from the state. And so I'm concerned that if we continue down this path, it's eventually going to dramatically and negatively impact. The quality of education we can deliver. There was no fault of anyone sitting at this table, um, but that's the reality. So fundamentally, we need to figure out how to shift this discussion and modify this so that we're not in that situation.
Oh, no, that's very, well, I mean, perhaps, you know, like, there's conversation. About that very question, so I wouldn't worry about it. Anybody else? All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Thank you, really.
Any abstentions?
Any abstentions? Um, well, thank you, again, a really difficult conversation, but a good one, so I just appreciate it. And with that, we go on to the Next Generation Accountability Report.
Big inhale and an exhale. And I just want to set this stage of what I want to share with you this evening, which is really a kind of high-leverage overview of what the Next Generation Accountability System is. What, what the purpose of it is. What is a district performance index? What is it supposed to do? What is it supposed to measure? How is it created? And how do we do? How did we do? Um, I do want to share that we have not had, there was a hold on this district performance index since before the pandemic. And we held off on it, I'll explain a little bit why, and now it's back. So it is a measure, um, a way for us to track progress. Specifically about how are we as districts across the state of Connecticut preparing students for post-secondary career college success? So the purpose is to track our progress in those areas. It's um, to help districts make improvements in certain areas. Um, it is to show where we might need some additional support or attention to things that are happening in our district. But also to recognize successes in a transparent way, using consistent indicators across one-hundred-and-sixty-nine districts. And it also helps to satisfy some state and federal requirements. Specifically around the Every Student Succeeds Act, also known as ESSA. So in a nutshell, that's its purpose. So what is a DPI or a District Performance Index? Uh, basically, schools and districts, and there's a district DPI and then individual schools, these indices. And schools and districts earn points on a broad set of twelve different indicators. Around achievement and growth, there is a significant weight on growth. Are students growing? So even if they might not be at the highest level of achievement yet, are we making forward movement? But the intent is to give a more holistic view of performance. And it also measures whether or not gaps exist in graduation and in achievement. And I'll explain what does that mean, how is that defined in a moment? Between um, all students and high-needs students. Um, high-needs students are defined as students that are um, English learners. That might be um, subject to free and reduced lunch or uh, are students with disabilities. So it actually looks at achievement of students specifically in those categories up against all students. And how are we doing relative to the state? And it also measures how are we participating in standardized test measures? Uh, both high-needs students and non-high-needs students. And what it does is again, it takes scores of all of those twelve indicators and it gives you an index. Now, there, again, there are certain weights against certain indicators. Um, not all indicators are weighted equally. There is a lot that goes into this algorithm, of which another evening or an offline conversation. I can share with you what those algorithms are and those weights and percentage points. Um, so for example, of those twelve indicators, middle schools and high schools um, are kind of marked up against those twelve indicators. For elementary schools, it's only four. And I'll share with you why that is as well. But again, the accountability system, it's supposed to give us a measure of post-secondary um, success and performance. And it gives us district measures and individual school measures. So I had shared with you just a moment ago that it also um, measures achievement gap and graduation gaps. So this is the actual definition uh, from the Connecticut State Department of Education. But your district is identified as having a gap issue. If your performance gap between high-needs and non-high-needs is greater than the state's gap in either one of those areas. So that's how they define gap. And again, high-leverage overview here. Um, these are the twelve indicators. So as you see, there is one around achievement. There is one around growth. Um, how do our students participate in these standardized test measures? Either ESPA or the Next Generation Science Standard or the School SAT, that's happening on Wednesday. Um, Sharon, it also measures chronic absenteeism. I know that you had brought that up in a previous Board of Ed meeting and can give you some details at another point. Maybe around some specifics. But right now, our chronic absenteeism rate, I forgot to mention this. This data is predicated on twenty-two, twenty-three data. So it's last year's data, I should have said that at the onset. But our chronic absentee rate was twelve-point-two percent at that point. Um, it also gives us indicators around preparation relative to coursework. Um, we've talked at curriculum committee around access to the fine arts courses, for example. Access to advanced coursework in um, it's in certain areas. Like career, technology and engineering areas around advanced placement. It also uh, shares a little bit about how well do we prepare kids by how they do on some of those exams. Um, it looks at graduation, students that are on track, that come in as ninth graders and graduate in four years. And then there is a six-year adjusted cohort. Do students, if they don't graduate in four years, how are they doing? Are they graduating in five years or six years? What I will say at this point about that indicator is that's something that we struggle with each year. Why? Because many of our students continue their high school education after those four years. Specifically, some of our students with disabilities. So I've shared with you before that some of our students receive public school education until age twenty-two. So those students who we're doing right by actually hurt us in that indicator. Just by how the algorithm is derived. So again, as I shared, I'm trying to keep it high leverage, but we can easily get in the weeds and I'm happy to do that with any of you kind of offline here. Um, it also looks at how many students right after graduation, within a year from graduating, enter post-secondary um, college or employment. And then there's some other indicators that seem a little out of kind of the, the group of these twelve indicators. Yet they're important. There is the physical fitness indicators. So if you have children that are either in the Simsbury Public School System or have been. You'll remember push-ups, sit-ups, the mile pacer, uh, the good old mile pacer. So we're actually, that, that leads into part of this DPI, this District Performance Index. And as well as our access. So I'm just going to take a breath for a second um, and see if you have any questions thus far on those twelve indicators. But that's what makes up our District Performance Index.
So I have a question.
Yes.
So I traveled this weekend and one of the things that came up was this whole thing about six-year. So one of the things I'd like to understand is if we, do we, or five-year? Um, are the only persons going through five-year part of? Um, are there any students that end up saying for, I'm just going to put it out there because this was a discussion. Sports-related reasons that they want to stay back?
We don't typically see that in the high school. The, the data that we collect on this is more of students keeping on track with the credit process. And hitting certain credit thresholds after their freshman, sophomore, junior and senior year. As a reminder, hitting those twenty-five.
The interesting, the interesting piece in public school, high schools is very different than a prep school where that's a huge practice.
This is happening in public.
Yeah, when you, when you start in ninth grade at Simsbury High School or any other CIAC high school. That's it, you have four years to play four years.
Yep.
So you're not going to garner any more eligibility. You can get that eligibility in a prep school transition. What you see a lot is kids may do their first two years in a public high school. If they feel like they could be on a track in that exposure or whatever it might be, they'll go to that prep school and reclassify. And so that, that's much more of a prep school practice. The rules in public school in the CIAC won't, you don't have any flexibility.
Okay. That's why I was wondering about that number, okay.
So this gives you a little indication, there's a lot on this slide about how our district fared this past year. And how our individual schools fared. So I thought it would be helpful to share what is the Accountability Index outcome? Again, this is a percentage of all points earned by our district on those twelve indicators, by our district and by our school. I also wanted to share with you in kind of a one-stop slide. Um, do we have any students whose standardized testing participation fell below ninety-five percent? Any schools, I should say, not students, any schools? Um, where is there any achievement gap noted? And any graduation gap noted? And then I'm going to share with you, um, what does it mean to be noted as a category? And tell you what those fun stars are about. So um, on this slide, you'll see our District Accountability Index is eighty-point-four percent. Again, very well um, overall in our district. And this is something that we're going to continue to watch for trends. Because it's been a number of years that we've actually had this Accountability Index. So hey, how is that trending from years past? I can give you multiple years past, but nothing really relatable to more recent history. And then you'll see again how all of the schools fared. Um, and, and again, that Accountability Index is a compilation of either those four indicators. Four out of those twelve indicators, if you are an elementary school. Or twelve out of those twelve indicators that I mentioned, if you're Simsbury High School. So we did very, very well overall with each individual school. I will note that there is um, a noted achievement gap at Simsbury High School between our high-needs and our non-high-needs students in the areas of ELA and math. Um, that doesn't come as too much of a shock for us, we have very high achievement. And so we are looking at some of those subgroup categories. You've heard me say before that our achievement gap is predominantly in Simsbury, a special education gap. And that's it lived out. And I'm going to get um, in just a couple of minutes to share with you what we're doing about that and how we're addressing it. Um, so as far as those stars go, um, this, the, the whole accountability system places districts in a category one through five. Um, a category one is that you are in the top tier on performance, on growth. Having no gaps, your participation rates are off the hook. And there are high kind of marks achieved in each. Um, we have multiple schools, actually, most of our schools fall in category two, which is still extremely high. Um, Simsbury High School is in that category three. I really believe that that's because of our achievement gap, that we are now currently in the category three. But again, if you come back to the purpose of this, it's to say, hey, where, do, where can we get better? And how do we address that? And I'm again, going to show you how we're addressing that in a moment. Um, Henry James, it's around some achievement. Mr. Baker had shared with you, again, this was last year's data, that we've made some good growth marks. And there's still places that we need to go there. Um, but we're very proud of all of our performance. What those stars mean is that those schools have been noted to be in a top ten percent for overall either performance or growth. Um, and they either, they have to have not, um, they, they can't have a participation rate lower than ninety-five percent. Nor an achievement gap. So really want to share, uh, big kudos to Squadron Line, to Terrafill and to Tooten Hills for different measures. They've hit uh, what's called that school of distinction and therefore that cool star that I placed next to their names there. Okay, so what are we doing about this? Uh, these results were released just a couple of months ago. So you have lag data, then the, the data gets all pulled together. Um, it's uh, shared with, with districts kind of halfway through the year. So you're responding i- in a, in a more reactive way in some cases. But the first thing that we've done is we've shared these results with building principals. Um, individually and collectively, uh, to have them look at their school performance index or their SPI. See how that relates with their strategic goals, their leadership work, what they're focusing on. And it's also use these results to kind of inform any building base adjustments. So for example, well, I'll give you some example steps in, in just a moment. But um, Ms. Seidel at the high school is already looking at it and going, okay. I need to kind of inform, to take some steps and to change some of these markers. Um, we also had an opportunity, I had an opportunity to review all of these, the, the totality of this accountability system. But also specific school results with our department leaders, with our department supervisors. And because we've had new department supervisors kind of come along and be noted. While they may have not have seen these results. while they may have not have seen these results before because they're newer leaders. And again, these results we haven't seen since before the pandemic. So did a full orientation with them and what that means. I did get into some of the nitty-gritty with them around the weights and the metrics so they can be informed and do better and decide how they want to use these results to kind of leverage next steps in their department, and we've defined areas of focus.
Just gonna jump in with one thing, because it's really interesting. Like you said, we haven't had the benefit of this data for several years. It's not the traditional way you would look at achievement data, right? So I'll throw this example out. So Latimer Lane School, who's got a little bit lower index score than some of the other schools, when you look at straight achievement on the standardized test, is the highest achieving school from last year. So it takes into this account the idea of student growth, looking at each individual student. Actually, give them a growth target, and I don't want to get too into the nitty-gritty, but it's it's data point that's gonna lie like, hey, you really move the overall index mark when you're moving every kid, right? And what happens is it gets a little harder to move the student that's very high to that next index level. So it's just an interesting way to look at the data, as you've made the point several times, we haven't had. Um, which will give us, you know, different slices and different strategies, as Sue said, in conversations. But you you know, for those of us that have, you know, been involved in this for a while, it's a very different, and we've had it for a while, but a very different way to look at how we kind of, in some of our school-based reports, report achievement, right? X number of students met the mark here, X number of students met the mark here. So it's interesting.
Again, right, it provides us that more holistic look. So these were some areas that really popped out to us. Um, first, physical fitness, and we were noticing uh when we looked at certainly some schools and just some overall metrics. And we also have a new department supervisor there in Amanda Roy. So it's great to have new eyes look at data and maybe data points. So she's already shared this data with her staff. Um, she's identified problem areas, you know, specific to, hey, is it a specific skill? Is it the way we're testing kids? Is it, um, you know, how are we giving them multiple opportunities to practice? How are we teaching into some of these skills? What are some of those instructional strategies? And she even, she teaches a a class at the high school. She's even presented this data to her students to say, what do you make of this? How do we problem solve? You've lived this experience. Where can we do better? So that's one area. Um, under chronic absenteeism, um, you know, Sharon, I had shared with you, chronic absenteeism continues to be a social workers, PLC, professional learning community topic, and a problem of practice. So um I met with one of the social worker leaders, and she's like, okay, we are working very closely with nursing staff, with families. We're doing home visits on students that have been chronically absent over time. We're looking at town supports, greater supports that we can provide students and families. Um, not in all cases, but sometimes in chronic absenteeism, just as a reminder, is when students are absent more than ten percent of the days that they could have been here. That is the official definition that the state uses. So this is data that we're updating monthly, actually, to the state and giving little um kind of smaller steps each month to say, okay, how are we doing? Let's look at our absentee rates. I want to share with you to date. Um, the end of January, every single school was at or above ninety-five percent of kids coming. But there are still kids that are chronically absent. So how do we get plans, individualized plans and supports? And how do we make sure that they are connected? Because again, sometimes, not all times, chronic absenteeism can be a reflection of if kids feel like they have a place and that they belong. So that's what we're putting our heads around and our hands around relative to chronic absenteeism.
You said the number was twelve percent?
Uh, twelve point two from last year.
That's great. That's significantly lower than the number that that article.
Oh, certainly. If you were, there's just an NPR um story on chronic absenteeism in in many districts saying twenty-five, upwards of twenty-five percent of their students chronically absent, using the same metric of that ten percent. And then finally, um, relative to the gaps at Simsbury High School. So we've, we are already in the midst of looking at, and again, SAT as our accountability measure, uh, doing some review and analysis of SAT. We actually, uh, College Planning Partnerships, who offer the SAT course for our students, they also offer the opportunity to sit with you about what they see in your data. And there can be areas of content focus, and there can be um areas of strategy as around taking the SAT. And we're putting our heads around that and working with our students around how can we help to have even a better achievement and growth there. Um, Maggie also shared these results at a faculty meeting and said, okay, more to come. Uh, we're gonna be working on this, on this gap. This is important. We want to close these gaps. So certainly more to come, but this is just work done since December when these results came out. So you can certainly look forward to more updates from me and members of the teaching and learning team relative to the accountability system and our district and schools' performance indices.
I do, go ahead. Good. So the quick thing was, you said elementary only had four indicators?
Yes.
What are the four?
The four indicators assessed are student performance, growth, chronic absenteeism, and physical fitness. They are their four.
Can you go back through the slide where you put up the, our report for the various schools? Can you put some of these accountability index numbers in context for me against like our Derg or labor in towns?
Sure. Um, so district, I would say we are by Derg. If we looked at Simsbury versus our Avons versus our Farmingtons, we're in the top third of our Derg. Um, you're adding a lot more data points into the high schools and the elementary schools um because certainly we have one high school and one middle school, but there are multiple elementaries. So they, it's hard to say what the trends and patterns are right now.
One of the things we've noticed as we're trying to wrap our heads around the data a little bit more, configurations of schools, middle schools that are five through eight, through six, six through, you're getting, you know, Squadron Lines getting compared with a K-three school on an index number that only has one grade of assessment data. It's just where you start to look at this, and you want a broad brush, and you're like, wait a minute. You you know, um, a squadron, right, K to six with all those programs is probably as complex and comprehensive of a school with the data points that go into it uh compared to some, you know, you you look at uh Counterpart and Granby that's separated, like, what are they, K-two, three, four, five, right? It's just.
Five, six, eight, nine, twelve.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great point.
So we can, we can dive into it and get you comparative state numbers and get you a little, we can put a dashboard together. I can throw it in the, throw in the update.
In the update.
But the elementary does get a little wonky.
I'm curious, it really was around district level?
District level, yeah.
I can provide that for you.
Curious on the percentages, and maybe it's somewhat you were just getting at the middle school, then it gets a little wonky.
Yeah.
I'm just curious, the thing I couldn't figure out is at the elementary level, you could be in the seventies and two. Up at the high school, you're in the eighties, you're a three. Middle school, you're in the sixties, you're a three.
Why?
And too crazy, like, right, that that feels odd.
Totally get it. So that that's that that next level of detail around the algorithm that goes into each indicator and how much weight by a middle school, by a high school, by an elementary school, they're putting into certain indicators, which doesn't give an apples-to-apples comparison and makes some of those numbers stand out. But I can show you by middle school or by high schools how things are weighted, how things are weighted versus high-needs versus non-high-needs. Um, and it's not one straight formula for your high school, middle school, and elementary.
You see the same thing when you're looking at broad brushes, achievement data, that that middle level categorically always kind of jumps out as a lower number compared to both the elementary and the high.
Yeah.
That's what I was gonna ask. Look, it looks like, again, that's why I asked a question. Our elementary school kids are doing this, right? Our high school, everyone knows, you know, our high school, and then middle school is like, what's going on?
Yeah.
Is that just middle school kids to an extent, right, transitioning, different things, you're kind, but it's still.
Combo of both.
Right.
I I think it's a combo, and I'm interested in seeing the DPI over the next couple of years to really tease out those trends.
Yeah, because it stands out as something, we're here, then we dip, but categorically, we don't.
Correct.
Jessica's question, the top third, we don't dip.
So we're not, the focus area is physical fitness, we're not as physically fit as maybe we should be, is that? Did I read that right or hear that right?
We don't earn as many percentage points in that indicator as I think we could. And some of them, it's low-hanging fruit about when we test and how frequently and not making it. Um, we we very much do, uh, hey, we're going to give the fitness test on this day. And kids who get worried about that, suddenly I have a stomach ache and I need to go to the nurse. And like, there are things like that. So how do you make it more of a, and I'm not saying test every day, but not just make it a one-stop-and-test kind of thing, right? Make it a normal part of practice, make it a part of warm-up, so kids are feeling more successful and we're not kind of just focusing those measures on one day. That's what I mean by that. Great question.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we are on to our second public audit. Um, Grace. Um, our next board meeting is next week, the twenty-sixth, back on a regular Tuesday, uh, at Central School. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Yeah. Matt, you mentioned Board of Finance meeting tomorrow?
I believe there's a Board of Finance meeting, so I think our responsibility is to communicate in the morning uh kind of where we landed on the number with a little bit of rationale.
So what we just did tonight will be part of that meeting tomorrow, and there'll be some discussion. And that's at that one.
Right downstairs, right?
Yep.
May meeting room.
Like, for your, they discuss, they won't talk to us, you know what I mean?
We won't make a presentation, right?
Right, no, but what we put forward will be part of, of course, there'll be some discussion.
They'll have to make, they'll have. Accept it into the meeting, for sure.
I I don't know what they. Now I will take a, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.